...started.
So we have, we have three or two, two things on our work session tonight. Wanted to update everybody with the integrity program and what they have come back to us. They will have more information by the next board meeting though, so that's kind of why I'm going to update tonight. They have, they have done their investment grade audit, which include a full LED lighting retrofit, retrofit across all of our facilities. So we're going to take all of the lightings out, replace them. Solar, that would offset approximately seventy-five percent of our district's total electric consumption. Water conservation, so faucets and toilets and things like that, that would be something that they would change out. Replacement of water heaters that are over twenty years old. And then the other aspects that, you know, they, they provide you with like, here's everything that we can do and then you can kind of go through and pick and choose as committee from us what we would recommend, what we would want to do. Roof, window, door replacements across five different facilities. And that was, there was some roof replacements in Paul, there was roof replacement in parts at Huntsville, at the intermediate school, at the middle school, window replacement at the middle school, at the, at the primary. And if I remember right, a couple of window spots at St. Paul campus as well. And door replacements, obviously I don't remember where they specified door replacements, but it was, I don't think it was at every campus though. They have an education program that ties in energy point, energy projects and the curriculum requirements that they, that they use and provide to us as well. But they are currently estimating the energy cost savings at about eighty thousand dollars per year with all of those. And then, you know, if you look, I'll move back a little bit. Some of those are big bang for your buck, like the LED lighting and somewhat the solar and the water. Some of those are maintenance type cost replacements. So you're deferring, you're deferring the cost that you're going to have later on by doing it through them right now. So.
Who's on the committee for this?
We had, we had myself, Mr. Ferguson, Tina, Mr. Mullinett.
Eric.
Eric. Yes. And Mr. Hale.
Mr. Trahan.
Mr. Trahan was part of it as well. They, they have come back and presented this information, not to that entire committee, but to the people who are on staff. And then, but they didn't have final price points on a lot of things, so a lot of those things were first estimates.
Are they going to have different options as far as what your lighting, your, your plumbing, what they're going to be doing?
As far as what they.
What they're going to do in our buildings if we decide to do this?
I think, I don't, I haven't, we didn't discuss that, so I can't answer that. I don't think that they're, they're going to get you whatever the best price would be is what I would say.
I'm looking at our electric bills and it's saying all we're going to save is eighty thousand per year.
We pay.
And they're saying that it's going to reduce it by seventy-five percent. That would be quite.
It doesn't add up.
No, it doesn't add up. Should be, because our electric bills have been horrendous. So it seems like it would be more savings.
Well, we, no, no. They pointed out that that, the actual, the solar savings is not as great as what they thought it could be for, I'm going to say, for different reasons, but one of the main reasons is because we pay meter, I don't remember the exact terminology that they used, but it was meter points. You know, we pay X amount per meter, no matter what. And it was just more than what they had anticipated.
Then why are they saying as a, we're going to save seventy-five percent?
Well, we still save that amount, that money, it's just not as much as they had anticipated.
No, I'm, I'm not understanding either.
Oh, okay.
Are they, is this solar going on the roof or is it going a far somewhere?
We're saying we're going to save seventy-five percent of our consumption, not of what we're spending. Is that what, is, are you reading it that way or am I reading it wrong?
It says at the total.
Consumption. So we're saving seventy-five percent of what we use. We're not going to save seventy-five percent of the cost.
Good explanation.
Yes.
Well, I was sitting here thinking about, I got, I got the engineer, because I'm an ex-teacher, and I read this, I'm not seeing it that way, so I just wanted to make sure.
Hey, we all bring different things.
I bet you.
On this offsite, is this property that we presently own or we would have to purchase property to put that solar?
No, sir, we do not purchase the property. We basically go into what is lease agreement. It's, it's property that they already own. It has to be within the service area of Carroll Electric. I think what they, I'd have to go back and look or talk to them again, but I think they said within Rabbit or within the actual land that they would be using to do it.
So what is our investment in that solar?
It is, well, we don't know a price point yet of what that investment is.
I can just see our patrons saying, you spent so much money on Rabbit or Decatur. Do you see what I'm saying?
They try to, and I, you know, I think the best way that I can put it is that they're trying to co-op it with another, you know, not necessarily with another school or another entity, but they already have the property there. They have other places that they can make it bigger and build off of it as well.
I'm just pointing out that Madison County dollars will be going out of the county.
Potentially, yes. Nothing is finalized. They haven't even finalized any of the information. Technically, we don't have to do that part of it, part of it anyway. I mean, we could go, we could do facility upgrades, we could do the water conservation upgrades and not even do the solar.
Yeah.
Just compare it with the water conservation. Because the age of the buildings here, you start reducing the amount of water that you're flushing a toilet with, everybody knows what happens. Everybody knows where I'm going with that. You, you, it's not a matter of if stuff starts clogging up, it's a matter of when. So it's very, very much on everybody's mind in that aspect of that's a.
Well, that's why I was asking like who was on the committee. I mean, you've got three people on the board for sure that have backgrounds in some kind of construction or, you know, electric, plumbing, engineering, and then a lot of common sense on top of that too. So I didn't know if an actual board member was on the, the committee or not, but.
Because of financial.
Part of it, yeah. But I think parts of it are good though. I think the, especially the LED thing.
I mean, that's, that's.
That's a no-brainer. For water heaters, that's, that's a good one, because the newer ones are way more efficient than the older ones were.
And that primary has to have new windows.
Yes, all that stuff is.
I've got way too, too many complaints on those windows.
Oh, and those, at, at middle school too.
Well, I'm sure they're terrible as well.
They're original to the building, I think.
And, and actually, and actually dangerous, because they're the old ones that finish your roofs, because my own personal child, her fingers cut all the way to the bone because they were goofing around. And they, because they just slipped down and catchy in that roof.
So money coming from the Congress to make these upgrades, do we have that?
No, and we, you know, I'm, I'm really, the money would come from AEO or AOB, which does a loan program of, you know, basically zero percent interest. It's not, it's not totally zero, but it's almost zero percent interest of up to, you know, two point five million dollars and they do it over a fifteen-year period. So you, I mean, we would not be able to fund it. That's the first part of that answer. We would have to do it through this loan program that they have.
Okay, some of these things like roof, window and door replacement, do we not already have that scheduled in a five, ten-year plan?
No. Not right now.
Do we not have a five or ten-year plan for replacement?
They just have many plans. Their only plan.
We used to have.
Could just be a five-year plan.
Yes, and that's not here anymore. That tells me we need to start getting money somewhere.
Because the problem that I pointed out with the air conditioners, we've replaced every air conditioner. So what do you think's going to happen in two, fifteen years?
Every one of them.
Yeah. So that was.
We definitely need to be thinking about reinstating what we used to do with, with having a scheduled replacement and budgeting for that, so we can.
So their final report is not going to be ready until after the next board meeting. That's why we just brought it up tonight. Once they, once they do provide us with final report, we can come back to you with potential options or recommendations. And they will be here to be able to answer questions that are very specific towards that information.
Will it be actually these people or will it be the same group that came before and existed with us?
It'll be the integrity and Mr. Jeremiah Herman, I mean, with it as well. Any, I mean, I'll try to answer the questions I have. We, you know, we, they basically were getting the final prices on potential window replacements and that's what was the whole of it. I don't know if Mr. Brandon would like to see it, but you might still have that information that we were showed that night with the other districts and how it worked. I mean, he might like to see that.
Yeah, that's true.
Just because he wasn't here. That way it'd be thought up.
No, but I like the idea of a five to ten-year plan together. It's kind of about, we started these work sessions so that we can have conversations about what needs to be done and what, because we're all, you're the only one who's experienced. You're it. Does anybody else have anything else they want to say on that before we move on to learns? Because it's going to take a little bit.
Finally. What do you mean?
First part of the office, Joey.
I'm just saying, it's a big load there.
So, go ahead and go on to the Learns Act, Act 237. I have tried to make this as easy as possible to follow, follow along. You have the actual Learns Act in front of you as well. It's the big thick bill pages. I will be, I will be upfront and honest, there will be parts of this that if you have a question about, I might not be able to answer. Rules and regulations for this have not come out, they won't come out, but it's in an emergency clause, so that means that it's got to go into effect for the most part. There are segments of it that are not going to go into effect, but I'd say most of it's going into effect July one.
Do we anticipate any lawsuits to drive home?
There's been discussion of, of that, but I don't, we have to go on as if it's not happening that way.
But I know the committee that's supposed to go through it and break it down and put all the rules together hasn't been planned yet. They're still reviewing applications to inform the committees.
We're shooting in the dark.
Yes.
Sort of, yeah, you're right. We, they have, they had over nine hundred applicants for the rules and regulation committee, including myself. I don't, I don't know where they are on that and that, we haven't been updated where they are.
I saw an email from somebody that had gotten an email which was that they had just separated the applications into four groups to be sorted through.
There you go.
Wow.
So I say all that to tell you that, you know, I've put the section that it is under, I've put the page number that it is under, and I've tried to give you, you've already seen most of this, but I've tried to give you kind of a little synopsis of the high points of that section. So SRO requirements in section two, that's on page two. It, it provides for youth mental health training and it requires that to be done every four years. That's kind of the highlight of that one. And if you ever, if you need to stop, then just stop.
Or something that we're going to add.
We, we already do aspects of it, but they actually changed the title of it, Youth Mental Health Training, and then they, they added a side to it.
Well, this is our.
Initial ones are.
Resource Officer. The officers appointed to our school board.
Section three allows for the state board to administer, administer early learning and education program systems. It's just, it's duties and power to the state board. Section four amends your powers to employ staff and it specifically speaks to superintendent and assistant, assistant superintendent.
So right now you're, you do your, the decision on the assistant superintendent, right?
I would make that recommendation.
Right now, yeah, okay.
So would this changes that or?
It changes the language, it's just added some of it, it's on, I'll go back to page three. It, it basically, you know, added one or more assistant superintendent to, you know, you employ that staff. And then it took out a lot of other language in there as well. Section five, this amended the five percent resolution rule that we have to do, but there's other laws that may take that aspect of it out in general. There was a, I don't know if it actually passed or not, but there was a bill that was circulating to actually take that five percent.
Okay, can you give me a very brief?
So every year.
Five percent resolution.
Every year we have to pass a resolution, and I'm trying to remember when exactly we do it. I think it's in the first semester for people who made five percent more of their income than in the previous year, in, in the last fiscal year, last school year. So if, if somebody made five percent more in a bonus or in whatever than their salary was listed as, then you put that name on a list and you just report it to the board. Whether that be overtime or, or, you know, we, we had basically everybody on that list because of, close to it, because of the HESR funding that we paid out last year and the year before. So this, this first amended it and then there was another, if I remember right, there was another piece of legislation that sought to eliminate it, but I don't know how or that went or if it had anything to do with it, how much it actually did. Segment six on page five deals with some deployment issues. A lot of schools already practice this and, and, you know, we just did this ourselves. You consult with staff before hiring and you use criteria for making personnel decisions, not tenure. It's based on other aspects, you know, of, of the work. And you had to submit your reduction and force policies to the state for review for this as well, which we, we have their board policies as they are. We just now have to go and submit them for, to the state department as well. So the section seven, page six, traveling teacher program. It's actually specifically listed. All this does is it repeals the teacher fair dismissal part of the traveling teacher program. So a lot of these that you'll see, the Teacher Fair Dismissal Act was a big part of one of the segments of it. It repealed the entire, that entire law from nineteen eighty-three. And so there are little sections, little segments here where it refers to that part being deleted. And this is one of those. It's just one or two lines in that part of the, the traveling teacher program that it, you know, it refers to the Teacher Fair Dismissal Act and this takes that out, eliminates that part of it. Didn't change anything else of that program. Section eight, page seven, Safe Schools Initiative Act. The major parts of that, new parts of it, you utilize a safety expert to review the school's safety construction plans, make crisis response training available and create a bus safety initiative. You have mental health requirements, awareness, awareness training, establish and train behavioral threat groups, teams. You, you set a pathway for increasing law enforcement presence at all schools and at times at major extracurricular activities. You know, you set a goal to increase their, their presence in all of your campuses and everywhere.
Do we see any possibility of that being funded by the state? I mean, we're talking about dollars.
Yeah, I know. I, probably not, but I can't answer that. I didn't, I didn't see, it's not listed in there as a part of it. Improve safety related operations and equipment and procedures. Now they did, they have given us, there is funding for, you know, building or, or safety protocols, safety, forgot the name of it, but it was the name of it.
It's the DSC School Safety Grant.
School Safety Grant. We are getting funded for that, but it's not for person, it's not for people. Sections nine through thirteen, so here we can group some together. This is page thirteen through seventeen. This is instruction and literacy. It makes you, you know, and a lot of these things we're already doing or that they're already a part of what we do. Literacy screenings, focus on reading, report literacy scores, diploma pathways, these are some of the newer, new things though. And each student's success plan or IEPs, review student's success plan annually, career awareness and exploration activities, meet with parents on graduation expectations, raise awareness on choice with curriculum.
Can this be done with present staff?
Yes, sir. At least I don't perceive that we'd have to hire anybody for that type of stuff. Section fourteen goes into school, school transformation contracts. That's on page seventeen. This is a new initiative, I guess, if you want to call it that, where a school district that is forming at, in a lower rated D or F and, and some, you know, and, well, at that point you can partner with another entity to try and get you out of that. They, they will, they call it a, a transformation contract. You would set up with a charter school. You would set up with a charter school, open and enroll in public charter to be able to do that. So, you know, instead of, you just have to, you'd have to do, you'd have, well, you don't have to, you have the availability to do it if you wanted to. And it outlines what those charter schools have to do to be able to qualify to be a transformation school, to be able to partner with you to be able to do it.
What would that consist of if we did partner, or if somebody had to partner with a school like that?
Well, you don't, right now, you don't have to, it would just open it up. And, and the rules and regulations for it aren't really written, so we don't know, it just outlines how, what qualifies the school's Board.
You're going to set a lot of teachers if you go that path as well?
Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, it's. But hopefully we don't, we can get, you know, two, three that are up, down, and get them back up.
So if you partner with someone, do you, does that give you a time, like three, four years?
I think it's two years, like they have two years to be able to transform and get show of growth and stuff like that, but I'm not sure about that.
We can partner with a school district that had low scores also, and, and we gain two years for each school district to get our scores back up.
I think it has to be a higher.
Okay, that's where, where I was headed, and I just wondered.
Sir, can we go back to Section Eight for one moment, Page Seven? I generally don't speak up much, but just wanted to get my attention. Down there, increase law enforcement presence during all tough times and major events. Really what's, what's more important than, than the safety of kids? There's, there's money somewhere in this district to pay an extra hand if needed. There has to be, if they're angry, we'll cut something else, we got to get kids. You're saying who's gonna pay for it, we're gonna pay for it, but we gotta have one more at certain times.
Well, isn't there funding from the State, what, what happened with that? There were some bills out there to supply somebody to help with safety in schools. Where's that seen?
I haven't, no, no, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I know that we've got the safety grant, and we, you know, that's, that's all that we've been allotted, right?
I'm not disagreeing with you, Mr. Village. My point was typically we see the State give us mandates as what we've got to do, but they don't fund it. And I was, my question was, is the State, is the State going to, to chip in for that? But I think, I, I would love to emphasize that safety of our students is more critical than lots of, lots of other things we do.
There's nothing more important than their safety.
Yeah. If, if you, yeah, we could get together and talk about what we can cut to make the safe campus. We're not, we're not on approach to safety.
If we gotta make cuts, let's just not start, we're host schools starting, that seems to be the arts program.
Yeah.
It's all about the arts.
Mr. Wong, can I give a plug in?
Yeah.
You know, just, we, we've had the conversations with our Madison County Sheriff's Office as well as our local police department to create those relationships and invite them to come into the, if, if an officer has an extra fifteen minutes, please just come up there and be visible. So, I mean, we, we understand that, yes, an ideal situation would be an armed person on campus at all times, but.
I, I'm more or less talking about you, besides events, major side events, you're not behaving well. There's always room for one more, sure.
So we're, we've been working with our, our law enforcement agencies to help improve that, just to have bodies in schools and, and presence, but specifically at St. Paul, we've partnered, like we are setting up an office for us, one of the state police people down there, so that if they can work in an office down there, so at least they're on campus, working.
We're sure proud of the SRO we have.
Yes. So.
On, on that point, have we ever checked, like, for extras, highly trained extra security at these events, or we didn't have to pay somebody full-time? Because there's a lot of security businesses out there that have highly trained ex-military individuals that, say we've got, say we get a district championship basketball game out here, they can bring somebody in for that night, I mean, you know, have we ever looked into that?
I have not, I don't know, I don't know legality of that, of a third-party contractor doing security like that. I have, I have not looked into it.
Most of them are state-certified in law enforcement, some of them are nationally certified by the FBI, if you go with a good company. So they've got jurisdiction anywhere that you hire them to work through their company, and the liability is through their company. So that might be something we want to peek into for, for, especially when we go up to five A next year. If that still happens. Because there's a lot of them out there that are very, very reprovable and highly trained.
Okay, I'll see what we find out.
Thank you for, sorry to interrupt.
Nope, you're fine, that's what we're here for. So Section Fifteen through Twenty, that's on Pages Twenty through Thirty-nine. Instruction is a pretty kind of the big part of that, requires seventy-five community service hours for students to graduate, prohibits indoctrination policies in school, develop training for sexual abuse and human trafficking prevention programs, prohibits curriculum on sexual topics before grade five, maybe age five, no, grade five, it's grade five, sorry.
Yeah, age five, I don't know.
Yeah, eliminate digital learning courses requirement for graduation, develop high-impact tutoring programs, have to publish your course choice options, create career-ready high school diploma option, and provide students in the workplace with workers' compensation insurance. Those were the main high points of that.
On the second one, what does CRT stand for?
Critical Race Theory.
Okay.
There's, there's quite a bit to be fleshed out in this section, honestly. There's, there's a lot of rules and regulations that have come to it.
Indoctrination can be so many things.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it can be done really, really suddenly too, if somebody knows what they're doing.
So Section Twenty-One on Page Thirty-nine, that has to do with maternity leave. School districts have the option to opt-in to a twelve-minute, twelve-weeks maternity leave that's paid, if I remember right, it's paid half and half by the State and by the district. It just depends on what the, what, what the district decides to, you don't have to opt into it, but you can. And it also does it for adoption leave as well.
And this is separate from their day, their sick days, correct?
I think so, if I remember right, yeah.
Because they adopt from late the same as all that.
I don't want to, I think so, I'm not gonna say that for sure. Section, also wrapped in, Section Twenty-One on Page Forty, is Superintendent's Contract. It's supposed to be published on the website, contain written and academic performance targets regarding those, and then you submit the contract to the Commissioner. Twenty-two, Page Forty-One, makes, it's a rescission clause, it makes this, this is one of those that goes back to Teacher Fair Dismissal Act, or anyone else. So it, it just eliminates that part of it, of the, of that. Section Twenty-three through Twenty-six, this is Page Forty-one through Forty-five, mandated reporting ethics violation, it amends this a little bit. Reporting of specific language, beggar, it adds language regarding reporting of ethics violation. And then it also creates a website for hiring officers to check for potential candidates for violations and issues.
Well, didn't they have a law, there's so many right now, they're trying, wasn't there a bill that instead of going to the law, it would go straight, like the ethics violation goes straight to the Ethics Board? Did you see that one, please?
There, that might be part of what that, there's language in there that's kind of like that, but I don't know about, I don't know that excludes the, the law and.
Which, which might speed up the whole ethics violation process, but I thought it might be kind of a good thing.
So Section Twenty-seven through Twenty-nine, that's on Page Forty-five through Fifty-five. It's Amends the Right to Read Act. It, it adds that you conduct curriculum audits to review content, provides literacy coaches. So this is where you heard that a hundred and twenty literacy coaches are going into schools. It establishes tutoring grants, makes, makes you make sure that you have ninety minutes of reading instruction daily, informs parents of reading progress, and then, you know, the, you know, maybe another controversial part of it, there's a lot of exceptions to retain third graders not reading on grade level. So they, there's a lot of language in there about the exceptions to that rule.
Don't we have literacy coaches?
We do in our building.
What's about that? Do we not have one intermediate?
Oh, we can see, yeah, all but the intermediate, has, has. Well, instructional still has, so I'm sorry, I'm not saying that wrong.
Well, not at the high school, I don't think we do anymore either.
We haven't, I'm sorry, I missed what, we have instructional facilitators at each building, but not, not necessarily.
We have to get.
She's the instructional facilitator at high school. I don't think we have one.
No, we do, I'm sorry, I, I forgot to say.
Denison?
She's the instructional facilitator?
I think so.
Oh, I thought she was the.
At least part of it.
Okay. Well, Mr. Kane was for the intermediate.
But you've kind of taken some of it off, haven't you, or a man, or didn't somebody, or was gonna help with that since?
We are helping, it's Hopkins and, and, and that part of that area, but, you know, there's no HESR instructions located there.
We already do ninety minutes.
Lot, some, not a lot, but some of those things are already in place.
And we're already science of breathing, that's gonna come up here in a minute and then.
Yeah. Section Thirty, this is on Page Fifty-five, it talks about numeracy and math instruction. Develop a math intervention plan to place on students on grade level, provide targeted math tutoring, assign high-quality students, or teachers to struggling students, and communicate intervention plans to parents and DESI. Those are just the highlights of it, it's not all of it.
What is DESI?
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
They changed it, right?
Yeah, it's ADE, the art.
It's the ADE, they just gave it a new name, Department of Education.
Academy.
No, and education has billions of.
Yeah, I think it's second to the military. Section Thirty-One, it reveals the recruitment and retention incentives. This didn't really affect a lot of the districts up here, but in other state, parts of the state, it took away this program. Teacher Fair Dismissal Act, this is Section Thirty-two through Thirty-four, Pages Fifty-nine through Seventy, it repealed it, and it repealed in its entirety that Teacher Fair Dismissal Act and Public School Employee Fair Hearing Act. I just put a little note, testimony from ADE, I'm sorry, I went back to ADE, it's just hard to get away from, from DESI, stated that rules and regulations will be developed and to replace that process, so.
So what do we do if, if we repeal one and we don't have another to replace it? Do you stay with the old one?
So what we've been told, well, I mean, until July one, this is in place. So, yeah, June, June thirtieth, I guess. But what we've been told is that ASBA will come out with some, they're working on them now, and before that deadline, they will come out with some guidelines to be able to put in place so that you can put it into your policy, so that you can follow it for the next year. This is one of those that they're trying to make sure that they put it in, in the right place at the right time, so that it's available and ready to go. That's what we've been told. So Thirty-five, Section Thirty-five, Page Seventy, we're gonna save this one for later, but this is Teacher Min, Minimum Teacher Compensation Schedule established. We're gonna do it, we're gonna do it in detail, but this, I'm gonna save it for last. Incentive, Intensive Support Status, this is again, when you had teachers who were on intensive support, you know, part of the language referred to the Teacher Fair Dismissal Act, it's just eliminated it. So that's Section Thirty-six, Section Seventy-six.
What was the means of support for?
So if you have a teacher that you are working with, try to make them better they are taking, and working with on an intensive basis, you are, you have put them on intensive support, meaning that they are, they are, they could be non-renewed, or they could be, you know, they could lose their job. Basically, this took the Teacher Fair Dismissal hearing part of that description out of it. Kept the, kept the tests and the, or the intensive track part of it, because that didn't, that was not eliminated. Section Thirty-seven, Page Seventy-seven, Merit Teacher Incentive Fund Program. It establishes a fund for merit pay incentives of up to ten thousand dollars, and directs the State Board of Education to get the rules in place for this program. Section Thirty-eight, Thirty-nine, Enrollment Capacity Amendments, so we do have some numerical maximum for school choice that you can allow in and out, and it, it basically takes those away. Section, keep skipping.
On the school choice, do we still have the opportunity to reject applicants based on their history of disciplinary issues?
School choice, yes. And, and transfer, yes, when they move into the district, not really.
Yeah, I understand that.
Section Forty is some counselor training, it, it prescribes training for counselors on youth mental health. Section Forty-one, this one was, I still don't know much about it, Philanthropic Investments in Arkansas Kids Program Act, it just added some language to that program and amends it. Like it, I just, I don't know much about it, so I'm not, I'm not gonna talk more about it, sorry. Section Forty-two, Opportunities School Choice Act, Freedom Accounts, this is Page, Section Forty-three and Forty-five, Page One Hundred, One Hundred and Three. Sorry, skipped ahead again. Page Eighty-two, so this provides for school choice, allows parents to receive public funds over other school option. It tells you how they, they will count those allowable expenses, and it establishes a timeline for implementation.
So who pays those funds?
It's tax dollars, state funded.
It's not coming out of our.
No, doesn't come out of the district. Now, we, you know, if they move, they move away, then we lose that funding for that student.
So if a parent thinks they're gonna get all of their tax money back from us, they're wrong.
I'd have to reread it, but, you know, they have very prescribed what that, what you can put in and get an allowable expense for.
I mean, there's, I think the homeschool was like seven thousand dollars a year that they could get, and it's kept in account for those kids, and they can use it to pay for their college. Like, a parent could just sit there and bankroll it into this one account, seven thousand dollars a year.
So they can't spend that refund at the liquor store?
No, well, I mean.
Not that we're aware of.
They, they can't, but they could. I mean, they're spending on school supplies, but instead of buying school supplies, they go with their actual dollars, so. And around that way, yes, but no.
Surely a tax time, you'd have to account for that, where that went, I would, because I think so, if you didn't, it would be taxable income if you were just using it, you know, so you'd have to pay taxes on it, if not.
That's a little smart, Joe.
Well, that's true, but, I mean, I think by the letter of the law, it would, it would have to be used for school.
But I mean, you could run almost anything off of school, though.
You could, you could.
Vacation to waters of wildlife up there and their aquarium.
This is true.
My personal understanding is that it's a reimbursement program, you have to submit a receipt afterwards.
Received afterwards.
Like, there's an, there's an auditing process to it.
That, that would sound similar, because, yeah.
It's just waiting there.
You don't just get a check or credit card for seven thousand, yeah, and, and so if you don't apply for reimbursement for the full seven thousand, then you don't get it.
No, it, it sits in an account.
Sure.
It sits there, it sits there until, because they can be used later for their college expenses.
Section.
I wonder how much that's gonna cost to, uh, keep track of that account.
They, they haven't figured it out yet?
Yeah. Maybe they could just hire some more teachers and have smaller class sizes and have a bang up program instead. We always do the silly thing. We always do the silly thing.
Section forty three, forty five, pages one oh, one hundred and one oh three, that, that deals with Teacher Fair Dismissal Act, fiscal distress in school districts. And the division of facilities and transportation, same, it's, it's all under the same umbrella of fiscal distress. Section forty four, so I skipped that one, but came back to it, transportation modernization grant, upgrade transportation equipment. Modernized routes, reduce time on bus, that's the goals of it, um, and how you get there.
Have they been to Madison County?
Yeah, good luck with that, this is the one that you hear the ride sharing thrown about and things like that, so, yeah.
Oh, I saw that.
So we'll see about that one. Moving on, section forty six, page one oh three. Background checks for volunteers, establishes especially for athletic coaching capacities, how do you go about doing a background check and, and kinda puts them in line with, um, you know. I may be mixing things up, I'm sorry, I'm mixing things up, so it, it definitely, for athletic coaching, it establishes.
Well, you should at least have the same background check the bus driver's got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Credit teacher.
And who, who picks them and decides on that, I mean, is that something Tommy does, or something you do for the, the volunteers, or?
We, he has, they, they, you know, usually they approach to, to ask the volunteer, or they approach the coach, and then he asks, he comes to me and asks me if that's okay, and, and, you know, we go through. We, you know, we want them to do whatever is prescribed by AAA, cause there are rules for AAA on how they can be, uh, volunteers and.
So we do ban them pretty hard? Okay.
Section forty seven through fifty, amends applications for open enrollment charter schools to the State Board. It adds language to regarding the renewal of a charter, uh, it even adds some language regarding facility funding for an open enrollment charter school. Section fifty one, you're almost there, almost, not really. K through three screening creates phonological programs, this one is, we're pretty much doing.
What does that one mean?
Phonological?
Yeah.
Phonological is, uh, yeah, phonics instruction, so reading instruction.
C-act.
Yeah.
Down the line.
Pretty much. It emphasizes decoding, what you did, sort of, focus on comprehension, provide early intervention, I mean, it's, it's K through skee, K through three skee, screening, and then everything that goes with it. A lot of things that are already being done, just solidifies it. Uh, section fifty two, one oh nine repeals the Succeed Scholarship Program, it's basically unnecessary because of the other section of the law. Fifty three, workforce development, page one twenty, create reporting information requirements for those. Fifty four, high school course credit, make, tries to get colleges and universities in the state of Arkansas on the same page on how they're going to, oh, sorry, how they're going to account for CLP exams and AP exams and other credentials as well. Trying to make them unify, uniform, so if you go to the U of A and you have an AP score on a test of three, a three, three out of five. Usually that's the cutoff score, three, to get credit, course credit for, you know, English or whatever, you know, composition. Uh, but it's not necessarily the case, like, you know, each university can dictate that themselves, and this tries to make it towards more meaningful. Minimum courses, core courses for college and career prep, requires a higher end stake board to set standards for career pathway deployment equivalent in standard, to a standard high school. State teacher education program, so this, this is a loan program, and it amends how the repayment program works. Arkansas Teaching Academy Scholarship. Sets up this fund and this, this program encourages students to choose a teaching profession, provide scholarship fees and tuition, contract to work in high need schools for a year. So it's not similar, but sort of similar to Teach for America and other programs like that.
Didn't it used to be like five or?
It's the same.
Yeah. Section fifty eight talks about early childhood. And, and, and find all of these rules and, and school businesses, so it's, well. That's your second. Fifty nine through sixty nine, foster child replacement and other grants, this is a, this is lumping a lot of grants together in one grouping, so there's a lot there. Uh, but this is where it talks about creation of those grants, the, you know, the educational freedom account, teacher scholarship fund, all of those, the literacy tut, tutoring grant. Where it talks about how, how to create and what. Okay. Section sixty nine through seventy two, transfer certain duties from DHS to Department of Education. And then the last one is the emergency clause, which is the last page of it. It starts to, it looks like not everything is in the emergency clause, but if you really read it, it's, most of it's in the emergency clause. Emergency meaning July one or as soon as they can after that, unless specified by, by the other parts of the learned segment.
And not even told DHS if they've got a job if they're being moved over.
Yeah. So I know that one's a long joke, because they might need a break.
So do you have any information on the seventy five credit hours of service that the students will have to have? Because that's gonna be a huge undertaking in a community of our size, and do they tell you who you can partner with and how you're supposed to yet, or is that also?
I know they kind of broke it down.
Two come later.
Like.
Yeah, they did do it by years, like, they did do it by, or they suggested it, but it's state board on the side later.
But if you get a kid that's passed all their classes, they barely straight by, they're working a job, and they didn't get all of their hours, um, is there gonna be, that's what I want to know, is there gonna be a waiver?
Well, are they gonna wait with the labor laws for kids, if there's community services to be done, because you're not even supposed to let a sixteen year old kid run a weed eater?
Nope.
They changed that.
They did change that.
They did?
Yeah.
Yep.
What's that now?
Fourteen.
So, and I, another question we'll need to find out then is when they do sign it, will that be retro happen on the current?
That's good.
Or will it start with, will it start with like freshman?
I'm trying to remember, it's, it is in there, I think.
Yeah, I can't remember, that's why.
In like twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
We're gonna have a full senior class, that's gonna be like a lot of hours.
Comes to mind, but I'm not sure about that.
I don't think they can make adjustments to the ones that are already in high school, their graduate requirements are already set, whatever it was when they were.
It'd be like when they faded the block scheduling out of high school.
Faded, they just ripped it away from us.
Uh, uh, that was one of the first group of meetings I went, and I made Mr. Stephen Ford so mad he asked me to leave.
They graduated in December, then.
I was the last class to have it.
Oh, I know.
He passed it very loudly.
Thinking day, all year long, made one class.
I'm pretty sure my junior and senior year, uh, about last at lunchtime, I'm pretty sure.
Eleven, went to work.
Well, if we're good, I'm gonna press on, this is, this is section thirty five, okay? So, section thirty five, page seventy, uh, minimum teacher compensation schedule established, it raises the minimum base salary to fifty thousand. Make sure that you have a hundred and ninety day contracts, and provide for at least a two thousand dollar raise for anybody who is making, so the cutoff is actually forty eight. So if you were making forty eight or below, you got, or below forty eight, you got whatever got to get you, or you got the amount told to get you to fifty. As far as teacher salaries, to get up to that fifty thousand, if you were making forty eight or above, you got two thousand, because that's gonna put you over the fifty thousand dollar, uh, threshold.
Are we talking about the base salary?
Base salary.
So a person who has, uh, extra duties and, and gets a extra amount, that.
Would be on top of that.
Would be on top of that.
That's correct, we're gonna get to that in, in this, we'll talk through a lot of that after. So, this leads into the conversation about a salary schedule, and I'm, I'm not presenting a salary schedule for recommendations, for approval, or anything like that, I'm just giving you what we're thinking about. And then, you know, after tonight, I'm gonna give it to the PBC, uh, because, and that's technically, it's, it's, this is state law, so it's not required for vote. But, you know, it's good practice to let people look it over, to get input, to, you know, to get yelled at about it, and go on, no, I'm just joking.
Never hit.
So, and I'm probably gonna, I don't know how I'm gonna do this just yet, because when you shine, the, the red light, it just leaks into it, so I may end up being over there and pointing at stuff, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get right in. Gonna mess up your round session. Yeah, you don't have to scoot to one side or the other, I'm sorry. Because I, it's hard to do it unless you, you see it, it's hard to do it if you say, well, here's what I'm talking about. So, I'm, I, I wanna take back, you know, you'd have to start, at least in my mind, you have to start with a philosophy and a goal of how you wanna approach this. You can't just say, okay, well, you gotta go, you gotta get a philosophy about it, and so we, when I say we, we went, you know, Ms. Ferguson, myself, Mary, Tina, you know, central office staff, people like that, we, we, the money handlers. Talked about how are we gonna do this, how, how can we afford this, how can we, what needs to be our goal and our philosophy? So, I'll take you back to National Ward Certification, so if you don't know what National Ward Certification is, it's a national program that teachers who, you know, they put in a lot of extra work, a lot of extra time, they, they provide a lot of, they provide videos, they provide, they do writings. Think of it almost like a dissertation in a year, uh, where teachers submit all of this stuff to the National Ward Certification Group, and then they either get a yes you've passed, or no you have not, and for ten years, they will get, if they pass it, if they, if they attain National Ward Certification, they will get, I think it's still this way, five thousand dollars for ten years. Okay, they, they've talked about tinkering with the amounts in different years, but I think it's still five thousand dollars. And I'm gonna use twenty eighteen, I don't know if that's the, really the date, the year, but it's, it's around that timeframe, so I just stuck with it, it's twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, somewhere in there, we'll just split the middle. So before twenty eighteen, if somebody, when was it?
It was nineteen.
It was a nineteen dollar.
Nineteen was my na, last National Ward year, and I got the money direct.
There you go, so I'm sorry, I didn't think about asking, but, so, so before twenty nineteen, change it in your head. The state directly paid that money to the individual, they would verify through the building principal, or through the superintendent's office, that yes, that person is still working in that capacity. Yes, they're seeing, still seeing students at whatever, they would verify it, and then they would send that money directly to the person. And then after that, in twenty eighteen, the state began to use the school districts as the pass through for that fund. So if you were, let's just take, you know, Springdale, let's say, instead of sending twenty individual checks to twenty individual teachers who actually working in Springdale as National Ward. They would send one check to the school district for the amount, and then have the district disperse that money to those individual teachers, does that make sense? So, you know, if there are three or four here in Huntsville, then that's, that's the way that operated, those districts became a pass through for those funds. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't gain any benefit from it, they didn't gain, you know, they didn't lose any benefit from it, or anything from it, they just passed the money on. So, you know, it took a while to get here for me personally, but we have kind of viewed the Learns Act compensation segment in that similar situation. We are trying to pass through the funds that the state is giving us for this, straight on to the teachers. Because there's, the state is sending a pot of money, a different account, a different pot of money, not, not tied into our foundation funding, not tied into our tax funding, not tied into anything else. They're sending it, or they're saying they're sending it, an allocation. That's what, that's what we're hoping, we're all fingers crossed right now.
At least for two years.
Yeah, the auditor said that you might be good for three, that's exactly right. So, uh, they are sending it to us, and then we are, we feel like we are, should just be distributing it to the teachers at that point. We should not have a net gain from this, okay? Even though technically, in some instances, we could, that was the part that I had to really get over myself. So, the goals of this potential proposal, number one is not to bankrupt the district, because if you don't wash yourself, you really can't. If we took, had started at a base of fifty thousand and just went down the line on our old salary schedule, in the, in the bachelor's degree year, at the, at the year of thirty. We would be paying out people seventy eight thousand dollars, which is great, uh, if we could do that, but we can't afford that as a district, we don't, that, that would bankrupt us in a year, in less than a year. We wanted to minimize the effect on our operational account, we wanted to follow the Learns Act law intent, okay? And there's a couple of layers of intent here, one was that pass through funding that I, that I have, that's the intent that the learn, that we have for the Learns Law. But another part of the Learns Law that's not really written down, it doesn't say it, but, you know, we have to change our mindset on a salary schedule. And get away from this, uh, yearly step increase, because that's not part of it, we're being funded one time funding, this two thousand dollar from what they made in September first of twenty twenty two. Or get them up to fifty, that's one time funding, recurring every, every year, so far, for three years at least. But it's not guaranteeing that as a teacher you will go up in a step from one year to the next, okay? So what you made, what you make this contract in next year will be at least for what you will possibly, could possibly make for the next two years after that. And then the other part of that is the, the mindset of getting away from a lane change. And a lane change, I'm gonna show you in a second, but a lane change is when you move from a bachelor's degree to a master's degree, or, in our salary schedule, you have bachelors, bachelors plus twelve, bachelors plus twenty four. Bachelors plus thirty six slash masters, masters plus fifteen, masters plus thirty, twenty four, I think? I don't remember, it's on, it's not on there.
Bachelor's plus thirty, and specialist.
Yeah, or specialist, and then doctorate. Oh, and then the last, the last concept, though, is that we do want to eventually establish a way to create level changes, so that we don't eliminate that from teachers to go back to school. You know, if they wanna go back to school and, and, and earn some, some other part of the degree, we wanna be able to facilitate that, but we don't have a way to do that right now, or to facilitate paying, you know, recognizing that in pay. So, this is the old, this is, this year's salary schedule, I've al- already referred to it as old. When you look at it in your slideshow, or in your papers, this is a lane, and that is a step, okay? And that's what we're gonna, that's how we're gonna refer to it from now on, in that aspect of it, sorry, I'm gonna walk back and forth. So, that, that's the terminology that, that we're trying to get away from. This should be, sorry, I didn't even refer back to it, you should have a copy of this PowerPoint, okay? So, a first step in doing this, in our, in our process of thinking this through, was to take the old salary schedule and start with A, changing terminology, so we started calling it the Learns Act Fixed Index, okay? So, you have the original base, right here. You have the Learns Fixed Index, which is basically that number plus that number equals fifty. Is everybody see that, okay? So, that in our salary schedule is what we're, in our old salary schedule is what we're showing to those points. But we changed the language on the top first, and then we changed the language on the, on step, started calling it a level.
Okay, and a level means what?
It means something other than a step, what we're trying to show is that it doesn't indicate that from one year to the next, that you go directly to the
So, we have no idea what you would need to do to be at a level four?
We, well, we do this initial year, yes, we will know what, where that puts you in the initial year. But to move from one level to another after this, after this next contracted year, we haven't, we haven't come up with any rules, or policies, or any way to do that, just yet.
So, in the initial year, is that how many years of service, or?
So, I'll, I'll get, I think maybe I'll get to that, just
Space, I'm wondering if I'm trying to get you close enough to which, yeah, right, I don't know.
We'll, we'll see if, we'll see if we get there, and if we don't, then I'll backtrack, maybe we'll try and explain it better at that point. So, when you look at our salary schedule, all of these numbers on that spreadsheet are represented by twenty-six different pay points. Every, everywhere on this is represented by twenty-six different pay points. I just happen to highlight them over here because it's, 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 they're, almost all of, or a lot of them are on this one, uh, lane, or one, yeah, one lane. But, all of our pay points for every individual in our school district on the old salary schedule is in twenty-six different spots. So, they, so every certified teacher that we have has a salary, gets into one of those highlighted numbers. That make sense?
You made the salary schedule to fit the salaries of people that are already working?
Pretty much. For what they're going to get the next year, next year.
Or, yeah, if they weren't making enough, then you fixed it, so you made it so that it fit, yeah.
So, when you reduce all that down, and you change the language, you come up with twenty-six levels, twenty-six pay points, and, and you have those two columns.
And no way of knowing how to improve from one level to the
We don't have that set yet.
And also
But we don't, we're also not funded for that.
We don't know if there's gonna be money from the state in three years from now.
That's correct, we, and I, I will say from one year to the next, so from after, we are, the funding that we're gonna get, the allocation that we're gonna get is fixed, at least for those three years. Whether they're not gonna reevaluate who we have in our payroll, and then look at, you know, what teacher moved around in the state, it is based off of what, we're, the funding that we're getting is based off of a pull-up from September first of twenty twenty-two. And that's it, they're not adjusting it after that, no matter who is in our district.
So, we've got to have this ready for July first, right? Now, let's say, um, I'm not on the board, let's just say, and I've moved here, and you need a science teacher, how do you know where to put me on this?
Right, so, we still have, we still have
Because it's based on who's already here, I just don't like a salary schedule that's built around so we can make it just for who's already here. You know, I, I think we need to have a salary schedule that is going to play into the future and makes it, yeah.
All of those, all of those points are still, like, to answer your question, we would refer back to something like this. And we would go, okay, coming in this year, where were you, you know, were you on, were you going back to your old step? Were you here, were you at step ten, or were you a master's degree? Well, we would go and look at that, well, that's, that's this price point, that's level nine, and we would put them in that level nine spot.
So, if we hire somebody from outside, like you're talking
A different state, yeah.
And they replace someone who was a level one, where does the, and they come in at a level nine, where does the money come from of the difference between one and another?
Well, we have that problem every
Yeah, that happens anyway.
Yeah, yeah, first-year teacher, leaves and goes, and then we get somebody that's got twelve years' experience, so, that happens all the time, that's
That comes out of operational.
That's what I was wondering, you know, because we had so many teachers retired at the end of last year, then, you know, September first was back, so, I mean, if they take the money out of that, I'm sure the teachers that replaced the ones that retired are, they're a lot younger, so they're not making as much, so, if we have to replace them with older teachers, or, you know, that's been doing it longer, I mean
But we never wanna get into where we're hiring people for money, we wanna make sure we're hiring the most qualified.
Well, absolutely.
Well, I mean, other districts have done that, where they'll say, no, like Springdale's famous for just wanting to hire as young as possible, unless they're desperate for speed or math, you know, and that, and that's why, and they have lots of people that apply, though, because they already paid a jillion dollars compared to everybody else. But we wanna make sure we're trying to get whoever's most qualified that we can.
Right.
But this does help us, because, I mean, we're going from thirty-six thousand
Well, there's a couple of things I don't like about it, and if, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to even
No, we just, we barely finished this
Okay, so, but anything we add or say from, um, our old salary schedule started the, had steps, and as you progressed at about, um, not much change until you got further down, so you were getting a little bit of a step every year, well, you know, like seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, and you got that all the way up to about, um, year ten. And then all of a sudden, you got eleven hundred and thirty-one dollars. So, by staying and being experienced and working, you got rewarded for that. On this one over here, we start off high, you're getting rewarded for being new, and then it goes back down for many years, all the way down to only getting three hundred and seventy-seven dollars every other year, until you get up to level twenty-four, and then you get rewarded. So, I'm not real crazy about that, for rewarding on the front end, which is where you can look at it, like, if you stayed in the district your whole career, you would make more in your lifetime, but at the same time, when you've been here, you're Ms. Prince, what year are you, Ms. Prince?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, so now she's at twenty-one, she might only get three hundred and seventy-six dollars, and the newbie gets eleven hundred dollars, that's
They're getting, they're getting two thousand above what they got last year, so you're getting, this is, this is what I'm, this is the concepts that we're trying to,
I mean, it's not the entire state doing the same.
I guess get away from, this is the, this is what, you know, this is what the governor has put out, this is what the legislator has put out, legislation has put out. It's not necessarily us, as an individual school district, or, or me necessarily, but that goes back to, no, we're not automatically going up from one level to the next. And if you look at our salary schedule, a two thousand dollar increase is roughly, like you said, Ms. Timberg, uh, it's a, it's a two-year, almost two and a quarter, step, accounts for that many steps in, okay? So, no, it, it is, it's, it's heavy on the front end, you know, it's, it's, I'm sure that across the state, it's there to try and, and get people to come into the profession more so than it is to, to, on the back end of it. I mean, that's, that's the way it's set up and designed, and that's how we're funded, that's the part about it that I'm, that I, that I keep going back to. We are being funded in, in a, in a very specific manner, and we are only gonna be funded for that way for three years, that we know of.
But I'm looking at like, and I, you know, as a teacher, and a long time, and didn't, you obviously didn't do it to make much. In the end, I was very thankful to a board that gave longevity, so that I actually ended up, I think it didn't really help me, though, because it happened when I'd already set retirement, so, but it was still really nice. It was very nice, and it's very nice for everybody who follows, but I'm looking at, and then we don't know, I know, I'm, it's hard to not think years when you look at levels.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm looking at level twenty, and let's just say that's, because you're saying you're gonna compare it, like, if I came in as a twenty-year, then I would be level twenty.
Best we could, yes, we
Yeah, well, right now, that's like seven thousand more than what's on our old salary schedule. So, I'm wondering why, if we're worried about money, why we're putting that much, you know, that, I mean, I know it has to be fifty, and then I do wanna see that it's continual to increase, I don't know, I'm just, I think they're sold. Lot of things to look at here, I don't know, how do you guys feel about some of this?
Let me get through it. And then, you know, this is, like I said, this is not for approval, this is for us to chew on, get feedback on. But I, I'm, I'm, I can tell you, I'm not gonna present something that I don't feel comfortable that we can't, that we would not be able to function as a district. So, anyway, all of those price points are all represented on, or pay points, not price points, are all represented on the, the far right. So, you know, each pay point is represented on the new schedule, this allows for us to, to facilitate that pass-through concept, we're just taking the funds that we have and giving it to those teachers. It's still costing us some, but it's, it's minimizing that effect. Uh, as much as we honor, uh, possibly could, we would honor new certified employees with the learn, with their Learns Law level placement, kind of what you, what you asked, we would refer back to the old salary schedule, say, here's where you were, and here's what, you know, if, it would be very difficult for us to say, no, we can't do that, but, but honestly, it does give us the leeway to say, you know what, we can't, and that's something that is, that is something that we probably need. You know, we can't, we can't just automatically say you're there, but we would do our best to make sure that we do put you there.
So, what stops a teacher, then, from consistently going to a new district every year?
That was my question.
The way they set up on the front, the way they set up on the front end.
It depends on, it just depends on
Why would I not want to come to Huntsville this year and get my front end, and then go over to Berryville and get my front end, and then go over to Green Forest?
I mean, you'd be able to do that for a little while, and then districts would be like, mm, we're going in a different direction, but
Well, not, not in this state, because we need them.
Well, uh, each district is setting up their own system, so they're not all the same, you have districts that might be able to, to afford, you know, they were already at fifty thousand, you know, you have at least two out of the four, in this, of the big four in this region, that were already there, and they might, they might just be able to keep going on. Actually, if I was looking at it, uh, I think Rogers had probably, and maybe Bentonville were right on, they were probably in the best spot, because their starting was forty-eight, right, right over forty-eight thousand.
I, I, I remember looking at one time, their, their starting was twelve thousand dollars more than what ours was, so we're at thirty-six, and some change at the time.
There are, there are districts that may be able to keep that philosophy in place, but I think you'll see a lot of districts that might not be able to. And then especially that automatic from one year to the next, or they will shrink it down to, to where it's not much at all from one year to another.
And we see that now, we see teachers, like, one school's always been kind of a jumping off point for the teachers, so they're coming to get their experience. But now, we're gonna be up there with the other ones, so maybe they'll come in and, because they like it, and say. So, we are careful about how we do this, to make sure we can keep it
And not bankrupt, I mean, because that's
Yeah, but that's, and that's a terrifying part of the life, is the temporary fund, is the no guarantee.
And, yeah, that's the part that scares me, and I, by looking at level twenty-five, if you base that on years, that's like almost nine thousand dollars more than what that person would be making now, so I'm thinking, like, maybe right now, with so many people retiring, maybe that's something, they're, we would be out a lot of money if this was like two, three years ago. And I, I, I'm wondering, did we ever think about just making a salary schedule that looked, starting with what the, um, what you had to have for the minimum, since we don't know we're gonna break, and then seeing what would be, um, reasonable and decent by how many years you worked, and some people wouldn't fit on it. See, this is, this whole was, was built on who we have now, just make a schedule, and then say, okay, uh, Ms. Timberg, you're right now, you're making two thousand dollars more than what this schedule is, and we don't, we aren't gonna reduce your pay, but you're, we're stuck with you, and you're stuck with, at here, until either our salary schedule goes up, or, you know, you retire, or whatever, and I'm grandfathered out. Or, but then I can see at some point, I might come back on, if I were here long enough, I would come back on the schedule. Does that kind of make sense? We had to do that at Kingston, because they didn't even have a salary schedule. When I started there, the lady that retired, Ms. Beard, had worked forty years, and I just started, and I only made two thousand dollars less than her. And I was like, hey, no way I'm sending this job. And so, we fought for a salary schedule, the problem was, my whopping seventeen thousand dollar salary, because we got a big bonus from the state that year, jumped us up like five, put me ahead of the schedule, so I just had to sit there and make that until I would eventually come back on the schedule. I did, I just kind of liked the idea of making some schedule that looks reasonable, and then work with that. Not, not make one around the people that are already here, that could come with that.
I'm gonna break this to you.
Okay.
Life is not fair. It's just not fair.
Oh, I'm not saying that, to me, I thought that was fair, to get a salary schedule, so that someday it would
We are, we are given X number of dollars by the state with classroom teaching.
Yeah.
And, and we're given a pack to do this, what you're talking about exceeds what we get from the state, and it would have to be made up of local money. Our local money has to be earmarked
You're not seeing what I'm saying, I'm saying this person on our old salary schedule is only making, um, fifty-seven thousand, but because of where they're gonna be placed on it, maybe it's not a level, just find where it's fifty-seven thousand, and that's their level.
I don't see where you're getting the money to do that, because if you, if you add this
No, that's more, that's, this is more, what they're proposing, this is less, this is what they're making now, this is what they're gonna go to. But let, let me ask a question, this might clear it up for me. So, that fifty-seven sixty-four, that would be a level twenty, if, if you thought of it in years, is not really a level twenty. You're gonna look on that new salary schedule and find where fifty-seven is, and circle it, and that's my level? Maybe that's what I wasn't understanding, so, that's my
The level has to do with like responsibilities, right? Like, if you're a Like if you're a, no, that doesn't have anything on there either?
No, these are pay points.
That's what he was saying earlier. There's really no grammar reading for the level.
The level is not...
Well, it's just a language change.
Language change. Well, it's, it's, it's a combination of years and all the plus twenty whatever, whatever. And so wherever you land pay-wise, it's a...
So, we felt like, and I'll, I'll start saying, I, I felt like we needed to make sure that, because the Learner's Law says you have to have, you get them to fifty, or you do two thousand above what they were, okay? So when you take that, that mindset first, you come up with, everybody that we're having employed, as employed, would fall under one of those levels on the right-hand side. They'd either get a fifty, they'd be at fifty, they'd be at fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty-one, they'd be at fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two, all the way down. Every employee, no matter where they fell on the old schedule, was in one of those pay points. So even a new person would have fallen into one of those pay points, no matter what.
Okay, I think I, so right now, well, I don't see how they fall in, because on an, on an old salary schedule, at twenty years, you would have been fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty. Well, the closest thing is right here. So I really would just be a level, is that twelve? Is that what you're saying? Because that's where I fit, but even though that is not, or over here. Oh, I see. But see, that, that doesn't even fall, so it's not even exactly where the person would have fallen. So a level, a level nine, because those are, I don't know, but, so I'd be a level eight and a half or something. So I make this eight?
Yeah, I mean, I may have, I may have made a math mistake.
Okay, so, no, no, so, but that's basically what you're saying. You just find me when I'm making now, that's my new level. Okay.
Anyway, what I'm saying is if you add steps to that.
I'm not saying that.
Okay, well, that's what I was misunderstanding.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I'm just saying, so, I thought you were saying that the level they would find us about, you know, you would find this level, this C-level, twenty-year level.
Yeah.
Eight, or...
And I haven't said what was mostly.
So they're just saying, you know, at the level like...
I was understanding.
Yeah, it is not fully booked. And three years, I'm like, I have to have money.
I have a rep, that's, I don't have the numbers specifically, but I do have...
I figured you probably had something on it.
Yeah, I mean, because that is, that's, so you're just finding this person over there. Now you're a level, but I don't like it that we don't know what that means.
I've worked here for ten years, I get to, you know...
Change. Well, unfortunately, it is not the new year.
I like the fact that they're...
It just, I just don't know, and, and I don't know that we can do anything different, because we don't know anything, but I just feel bad for people like not knowing what a level eight is. You feel good about that, Denver?
I'm a level six, according to the salaries.
Yeah, and I mean...
It's my twentieth year teaching.
I know we have to probably do some different thinking, but you're a level six, and what do you do to be not a level six? What do you do to be a level six?
We don't have that anymore.
I know we don't, but that's, and it's the hard thing.
And that's, we're going to have a lot of answers that are just, we don't know, because they haven't given us any guidelines or rules or anything. They just said, you've got to put it in place, but we can't tell you how you're going to do that yet, but you have to do it, and then you have to fill all the questions.
That makes a lot of sense for us, having to, you know, do new contracts and stuff.
Yes, exactly. But it's, but it's, see what's not necessary.
We don't know for sure.
How late can we be on new contracts?
We want to try and get them out in May. So here's, here's, so, first of May is our goal. Okay, and I know that's, that's a time crunch, but, so here's the reason for...
What we're doing is a contract that we don't have any idea where we're going to get the money from.
Well, we, we have been assured that we are getting money. We are getting X amount of dollars. We do, we do know that.
We're going to see a lot of each other in April.
So, I'm sorry, I lost my...
I see a lot of us that just wiped you out there.
No, I didn't mean that way either.
Squirrel.
Take him out.
Okay, I do like that on administrative, all these have redone in, way back, in months and months ago, I requested go back to a two-forty, because that's more common, and you've gone back to two-forty.
Yeah, let me get there real quick, and then we, then we can talk about that one. I, I, because I don't feel like I, like I'm, maybe I'm not, I don't, I just don't feel comfortable with this yet. So to answer your question, our goal, like every, and so we're in competition, and I say that, you know, we are kind of in competition with every school in the state right now. All of them are trying to get these, these salary schedules out there. Number one, to be able to say, okay, next year, Ms Prince, Ms Segal, you're going to get this. Here's how much you're going to make. I mean, that's important. It is. It's important for everybody, okay? Because that's what, that's what they're, it's what everybody's used to, and by law, it's what we're supposed to. Okay, so we're still operating under, under the old law. The emergency clause kicks in in July one. Not the emergency clause, but the new stuff kicks in July one. So that's kind of why there's a little bit of a timeframe to this, to get them out by May first. Because then you have thirty days to review it as a teacher, and you have thirty days to make sure that you expect to get it signed and returned as a school district, things like that. So, and that's generally the timeframe that you do that, that you do these things. So that's the reason for the time, sort of.
Sorry to interrupt, but isn't there also the deal too? Like if you, contracts don't get out to us while we're still in school, then they have to be like certified and made on...
Yeah, and we don't want to do that, yeah.
So that's another...
And deliver it at cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm going to, now, Ms Timberg, I'm going to step forward to the salary schedule, license index schedule. So this is the old license index schedule. This is how we pay. It's based on a percentage point, or percentage. It is how we paid our academic coaches, or not academic coaches, but our teams coach, our athletic coach, our, you know, our yearbook staff, our freshman sponsors, all of that. So to explain this, the percentage points were for us. When Mary had to go into the e-finance system, she had to actually take that and make it into a physical dollar amount. So whenever she did that, she had to translate it for the system and stuff. And it was based off of the old base, thirty-seven, six, seventy-three, is that right? Thirty-seven, something, thirty-seven, six, something, okay? So, oh, there it is, it's right there. Thirty-seven, six, seventy-three. Sorry. So you took that base, you multiplied it by, if you're the academic teams coach, zero point five, and that would give you what your index amount was. So if you look on this, add it to the base, so fifty thousand on the right-hand column, you have Learner's Law maximum level. That is that number from the old salary schedule, okay? We just changed it from a, a percentage index to a fixed index.
Which is much better, because what was happening, if you raised that base, every one of those people got a raise, plus they got the raise for being a teacher.
Yes.
So it was double dipping every time I had to do that.
So what we also did is we added a minimum, meaning that, let's say, the teacher who is the junior class sponsor leaves, okay? And then we put them in, or, yeah, and then we find somebody to take that spot, and we find that they will willingly be the junior class sponsor. Well, we don't have to pay, not that we don't have, we have the option now not to have to pay out the maximum amount. So instead of the seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, they would, we had the option to pay them at a level of five hundred.
So like coaches and stuff right here, that's been here a while, is going to be over here at the maximum level?
That's the maximum that the law allows. That, that is what our old, that is what our old index reflected, so that is the maximum of that index. So that is what they were given, yes. Remember, the Learner's Law said you had to do two thousand dollars above what their contract salary was this year.
And that is so not in line with what other districts are...
But that's the base. It's not the base plus this, is it?
It, it is, so it is what they made last year plus two thousand dollars.
Plus, that's...
If they were under, if they were under fifty thousand.
If I'm the head basketball coach, I'm going to make this on top.
Of your, of...
Of my salary. But if we hire a new basketball coach in five years, we might make that.
If this salary schedule is still in place, yes.
So if I...
But we have to pay these people right now.
Or it can be somewhere in between. It can be somewhere in between.
That's, that's just a range. There's a minimum, there's vice versa.
Well, I know it's maximum, but what I'm saying is, you do base that on, so that it would match what they're making right now. So we're going to have to pay that to whoever's on staff right now.
We have, well, that, yes, they were already going to get that anyway, by contract. That index was already going to be paid to them.
I've answered my question.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the fifty thousand plus the two, which we know that's how that goes, is that based off of, let's say like a first-year teacher? If they're making off the salary schedule, thirty-six something, is that going to bump them to fifty? Or do you take it, the, that first step plus this, and then take it to fifty?
If they were below fifty, it's two fifty.
A bind? Just fifty?
They just got fifty-five dollars.
Okay, so they'll be at fifty plus this amount?
Okay.
It actually is not, it actually is not as, it's not as bad as what you think.
Because this coach right here, these two coaches are already making sixty-five.
They're already making that, right?
They're already making sixty-five. We're already paying them.
But we're not giving them, we're not boosting them up above that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Right now, they're making sixty-five. Okay.
Period. I mean, period across board. Whatever they were making, plus two thousand. That's all you got to remember. Well, no, 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 I'm sorry. That's, that is not completely accurate. So, because you had, you've had some coaches, let's just take coaches, who were not at, at that maximum level. Does that make sense?
Oh, so some of them will be making less, because they weren't at the maximum. They'll be in that in-between, not min, not less.
Nobody, nobody made less, if I remember right. They made less than another coach.
No, no, I don't mean less than last year, but what you're saying is, we might have a, a coach that's only been coaching for three years, so he may only be getting this minimum to make his own. He would get more than the minimum?
Yeah, but he's not, he's, basically, what we, how it's designed is that that coach is getting what we are getting from the state. So...
So he's really only getting two thousand more than he did last year?
Unless they were getting, you know, unless they were, unless we were getting ten thousand to get them up to the, a base of fifty.
Right. So if they're making forty thousand, they're going, they're going to get ten thousand to get them up to fifty.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Then, we just passed it on to them.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just a comment, I'm sorry to say this, right? But the big issue has been, and I was hoping some changes would be seen when all this happened, is that right now Huntsville is like the hotspot for coaches. Like we have a coach now, eighteen years as a teacher, come from Bentonville to come to Huntsville, because he makes more specifically because of coaching. And that just seems kind of out of whack. You know, I know I'm going to have a first-year teacher whose first year this year, but he coaches basketball, he's going to be making almost twenty thousand dollars more than me, and he's, it'll be a year two.
And on this, he'll still make twenty thousand more?
Yeah.
We need to address that, Mr. Warren.
Well, no, because, okay, but what I'm saying is, oh, because he already is here last year?
He's here this year. But we're still out of whack in comparison to other districts in how we pay our coaches, it seems like.
So what we have to do...
Why would we lose, why would Bentonville lose a coach, come here? That's, that's before we do anything.
So what we have to do now is, we have to make sure when we hire somebody new, we're paying in line with everybody else.
So on the contracts for these stipends, is there any laid-out requirements on their contract, or just coach?
Typically, they get the, they can get listed out how much they're making.
No, no, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about job requirements.
Like duties?
Yes. There is, there is.
Coaching and other duties as a sign.
No.
I can't hear you.
It says on there, it'll say, you're a teacher or coach, whatever the job is, and other duties as a sign.
That's, that's it. No, no.
Well, see, why ours don't...
We need to change that.
Why ours don't, we'll say, because they have, all coaches have extended contracts. But if we extended their contracts, then they would have tripled it. So we couldn't do that. So in new, new contracts, we could put that in there, that they are to work, I believe, right? That this includes, stipend includes X amount of days.
I'm not so much about the days, it's the requirement, what they're expecting to be, you know? If I went to work to operate a trackhoe, and I didn't know how to run a trackhoe, well, there you are. I'm sitting there, I'm drawing thirty bucks an hour to run a machine I don't know how to run. Well, if we got a coach in here, and he's getting paid to coach, and he don't know what he's doing, and he's drawing big bucks, then that's where we at. You know what I mean? They're not...
Who evaluates you?
We don't have, the only evaluation they get is from the principals, because our athletic director's not, hasn't been certified.
So, but now we're talking coaches, but is this across the, did we do stipends on all stipends like we had on our old salary schedule, or do coaches?
Pretty much, it's all like down through there.
Well, I'm looking to see like...
And I'm sorry, I pointed out coaches specifically, but it's really any...
Yeah, and, but I'm looking...
Actually, hemic teams, yearbook.
Okay, yeah, so, okay, so we just put, yeah. But see, like, if, if, I'm the quiz bowl coach, I just use that, because Josh won't be at them. He works super hard, does super great, and I know he wouldn't do this. But let's just say he has a team this year, as he knows, it's going to be really weak, and he don't want to waste his time traveling, putting together the tournament we have here, doing all that. And so he says, you know what, this year I'm just going to take it easy. We're just going to use our class time, because he has a class for it, and I'm not, and that's it. So why would he get a stipend? Because it's not, and on our contracts, it says you would pay it back, but what will we make him pay it back for? We don't, it doesn't say like he should have X amount of time put in, or he must take him to so many tournaments or something. I mean, there's nothing, he could not do his job, and we can't make you pay it back, because there's nothing to base it on. Does that make sense?
It does. That's not the norm, that's for sure, most, in any district. You don't see, you don't see you have to go to X amount of tournaments or X amount of...
I'm not even talking about that. It's what they did before, what is the double?
You're supposed to do that before you hire, is what I would tell you.
Isn't there a job description laid out for all of those stipend positions somewhere that you can say, are you making this, or you're not making this?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. I would say that.
Yeah, that's, that's basically what I was...
That's what he's getting at. That's what he's getting at. That's what, that's what I thought, where I thought he was going.
Because how can you make anybody pay back the stipend if they didn't do their job, when there's...
I mean, if one of these girls, if they're in their class, we're going to be looking at their contract, you know, just not picking on you, but for example.
And accountability, she...
You will, everyone of those, you know?
Well, teachers have certain things that are required of them that they have to do. Students have to do so-and-so. Well, I mean, everything should be that way, right? Everything should have a job description, and if that job, we need to figure out, how can we help you do your job, or...
I mean, I'm required to have that for preschool.
Right. And we need somebody to evaluate their performance.
Yeah, that, exactly.
As far as, you know, are these kids going to the gym, and are they lifting right, or they don't hurt their back, or these baseball players wearing their safety equipment? I mean, I know you can't babysit everybody, but there needs to be something in there where we can hold them accountable. That way, if they're just standing around with their finger up their nose, drawing a check, we can send them down the road.
And you, wait, unless you have something that says this is your requirement, how do you...
You have no, no report.
Yeah, we're, we're too wide open on that, you know, I think.
How do you evaluate if there's nothing to evaluate by?
You gotta have somebody.
And let's say Josh leaves, what's the next person, you know, they should know what their, that job is.
Sure. I thought that's where, I thought that's where he was going with that.
Are you telling us that no other school district requires that?
Yeah.
On their contract? No, that's where I was, that's what I was.
But there's a job description, there's a.
There's a job description, and that.
And we have, we have positions that have job descriptions, I do not know that it would fall into, you know, the academic teams coach.
Well, yeah, I bet.
So I can't say that every one of those that are listed there has a job.
And is that a board or is that PPC?
Uh, it's, it's really been written for the continuation of operations, more than anything.
And we've had this conversation over several years, like we've gotta get these job descriptions, we've gotta get them, we've kind of rotated and rolled through them, sections at a time, but we never quite get everything complete.
So you're saying you have work done on this issue?
On job descriptions for like, like specific classified and certified jobs, yes. For things like quiz bowl coach or assistant basketball coach, we do not have descriptions for those, and that, we haven't written those.
The, the process we've followed is basically for the last two or three years, every time we've had an opening, we have either updated or created a job description for that position. I will say specifically though, for these stipends, we do not have, like, I could not pull a job description for yearbook and tell you what.
And where would you find those job descriptions? Could we look those up?
We have them internally, you can look them up from outside.
No, internally.
I mean, you could look up the, the job openings we have.
Yes.
And you can look into the website, and you could see what the job description is.
But, but I just wanted to know, like.
We didn't have a database so that people could openly access.
Like, let's say, I don't even know if this is one, the FCC LA coach, let's say gets a second. How would I, could I look that up myself? I would only be able to do it if I came to you?
Well, I mean, you could request it from me or Mr. Warren, or, I mean, it's with the job posting as well, I mean, if we were.
I, I think that'd be a thing to have on line, where people could look and see what does this person do?
Cause there's some, they don't typically get a job posting, they'll either, yeah.
What was it?
Like FCC LA or anything like that.
I don't think that is mine, I just made that up.
Right, but I meant those types of positions, you're not gonna see on the website.
Right.
Who told them that, those are not after.
Somebody's gonna fill in that position.
Yeah.
Well, and a job description is good for both the employer and the employees, because, you know, I'm getting paid for this, but what am I supposed to be doing? You know, obviously if I'm a football coach, my job is to coach football, but what all does that entail? You know, I mean, yeah, there's X's and O's and wins and losses and all that stuff, but there's more to it than just that.
And this has come up before, especially when we start looking at how we post jobs, and, cause previously in the past, it's been coach slash teacher that we'll be posted, we need to, yeah, in that order, we need to flip that. Like, we need to be looking for teachers who are strong teachers, who also have been coached, that's, that's kind of where we're.
Yeah, that, well, we don't have to make a teaching position for somebody who hires a coach.
So, yeah, I guess it's such a.
It doesn't sit well with the backstory.
No. And they, cause we, we, what we end up with is we end up with coaches who are teaching classes with four kids.
Or they teach one class a day, the rest of the time they're coaching, they're something, but.
So, it, it, it ends up really teaching, plus they're off balance, and then all of our PPC notes are complaints about, well, someone says do this, this, this. Well, if we have a thing that says these are their duties, when you see them doing this, this is what they're supposed to be doing situation, that would come out some of that as well.
All right, just the fact that be more efficient, like you said, you have somebody that's only got four kids, you know, or fourteen a day, and then coaching the other part, or we have three coaches that in offseason are watching a dozen kids, that's not very efficient, we talked about that before.
I'd love to see coaches at parent-teacher conferences.
Oh.
Like, if it's not in their season, with some shit, it's easy.
Yeah, yourself.
You know, they can't put that. And we're, we're, we're not being specific about people, like there are some, there are coaches with the best teachers.
No, no.
There's one that comes over to interview, it helps us all the time, and just super grateful for them, one of the best educators I know. So it's not the people, it's just.
No, yeah.
If we're, if we're really going to make Huntsville as good as it can be.
Right.
We better start looking at some of this stuff.
Yeah, and, and for years, I taught with Greg McConaughey, he was my partner in science, he took the overflow, and I would not have wanted anybody else. His kids were well-prepared for the test, and no complaints.
Yeah, because they're ultimately teachers.
Yeah.
Who have been coached.
And he put in his time, so it's, yeah, it's not, yeah, but. We don't, like I said, sometimes we create jobs so we can get a coach.
We need to look into some, even if it's a brief, brief job description, we need to lay some foundation down there, something.
Especially if they have teaching contracts. I mean, those people are terrible for the.
And these stipends aren't usually a lot of money, but it's just like the fact that, why give somebody money if they're not doing that job?
I agree.
I mean, that way, when I guess, give it to one of them, they're probably saving twice as long doing their job.
I'm a firm believer in a day's work for days' pay.
And, you know, we're fully aware that when you're a coach, you have other elements to your job, the, the social, emotional part of it, the relationships they build with their kids. You can't put a month, you can't put a month on that, like, it's, it's incredible and it's important, but we gotta look at each other.
And I'm not just picking on coaches, it's just anybody that draws a stipend.
Needs to have it.
Say you're, say you're teaching the kid how to run a lawnmower out there, you know, if you're just standing there watching the moat, are you really earning your money?
Thank you, Josh.
Why is there stop getting one of them?
Okay.
So.
I, I had another question.
Yeah.
Wrote that, is that right, where's that right? Back to the classified. I wrote myself another.
Cause the way I think of things, it should be, here's your department director, here's your salary, and then it comes to your salary too, but that's just how it works.
Especially if you're starting from the beginning, you're designing a system, you play out that, there's your salary, there's your extended days, extended days. Okay, the last page.
I have one question. I'm sorry, I write, I write questions, see, while we're doing this. Um, for instance, on the old one, IFs were extended contracts, they had days added. I don't understand why, because they don't have to put in lesson plans, they don't, and not, not that I'm talking mad about the IFs, I love Teresa Rutledge, she's amazing. She, I would want her for my IF any day of the week, but there was no point, why would they need extended? So has that been taken off? IFs won't have extended?
No, actually, that was a conversation that I just had with Mary before she left today. I didn't, I didn't think of, there's librarians, there's instructional facilitators, other than administrators, there wasn't any other IF or other extended day contract people listed on our salary schedule, so it wasn't on the table.
Oh, but it's on their contract, that's where I saw it, yeah, and I'm seeing, why, why would they need extended? But, so in the future, how will that be addressed?
Well.
They're gonna fall somewhere on the level, I, I've got that figured out now.
So you have to, on a, on a day, an extended day contract, you have to, is, you have to, you have to take their two thousand dollar raise that they got, so you set them on that schedule with the two thousand dollar raise, and you have to, you have to divide that by one ninety, multiply that by one ninety-five, and you get basically fifty-two dollars at some point, you know, added to their, added to that level, or not level, but.
Okay, so that will be adjusted, so, but they won't have to work two hundred and five, or a hundred and ninety-five anymore, they'll just work the one ninety?
No, we haven't gotten that far, we don't know.
Oh, we don't.
I haven't, I'm sorry, yet, there are reasons for having people like librarian, like.
Oh, yeah, cause they've gotta get the library ready, and they gotta get it put back, and I understand that, but IFs, why? You don't have to put in lesson plans, they.
Full data during the summer, they get ready for preparation.
What, like, what do you girls do all day long? Teach kids, what do you do after school? Full data? Do you get paid extra for that?
I have pretty spreadsheet.
You don't get paid any extra for that, they have all day to full data, and go in, and they adjust their schedule, and they set their schedule. I just don't see why they would need five extra days, and that happened just a few years ago. I think that's one of the things we need to look at. The instructional facilitators, because some of them were, and that was the way, it's, that's always the easiest way to get somebody more money. Then come to the board and say, we wanna raise their pay, you just come and say, oh, well, we'll get, we're gonna add days to their contract, so it basically is a raise. I mean, yeah, they have to put in five more days, but why, why did they need to put in five more days?
Sorry.
I'm just saying, I'm just like, they pull data, who gives a crap, they're pulling data all the time, and it's after school, or six o'clock in the morning, if you know where Tracy Prince is at that time.
That's right.
Most people don't have two kids all day.
I don't know, seven o'clock, she's standing out there with the.
Yeah, you stand out there with the.
Even when I'm dressed like Scoob's teeth.
That was my favorite day.
So the last, the last page, uh, is the admin. The admin had a formula that was fairly complicated, on the middle part of it, and it had an index, it had two forty-five days. It had, um, stipends on the bottom of it. So what we did is, we just started listing out, we changed it from two forty-five to two forty, okay? So, and then on our, we did the same thing, we had a Learns Law minimum, or maximum minimum. And we took the funds that were being allocated for those people, and, and basically gave it to them on the top end of their Learns Law's maximum salary. So the assistant superintendent, that is the, that is the salary that that superintendent would be, that assistant superintendent would be getting next year. All the way down, except for roles that we didn't have people in. So the director of personnel and program compliance, the assistant elementary principal, the admin administrator K twelve, we took those out, or we, we were able to take some leeway with those, basically. We didn't have somebody that we were trying to pay on that one, and follow the Learns Law. So we took out the, the same process, we took out the fixed, the percentage index, we took out the complicated formula for them, took out several of the stipends, um, and we just put in, here's the salary that that person was going to be making, next year, based on the Learns Law, put it at the maximum, and then created a minimum in case somebody left, and we were able to fill it for a lesser amount.
Okay, so I have a question, I have to stand up here so I can.
Sure.
Okay, so, we'll just use Matt. So is this what Matt was making, is making this year?
No, ma'am.
He's making more than that because it was two forty-five.
He's making.
He's making this.
That minus two thousand.
This minus two thousand?
That's his current level, yes.
Well, but now he only works two forty days.
Yeah, we reduced the days.
Oh, but, did we reduce the five days off his salary?
No, because we had to pay two thousand dollars above what he got this year, by the Learns Law.
And then you reduced it by five days?
Yeah, I mean, we just reduced it by five days to get it more in line with everybody else.
Okay.
We did not affect the pay, we stuck with the Learns Law.
So, basically by reducing the days, we're.
Reboarding, they're getting more money, that's a, yeah, that's why I'm kind of confused on that. And so this, this, he was making ninety-seven, is what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay, it was what he was making, shouldn't we have taken and reduced it by five days and then added two thousand on it?
Couldn't, we can't do that because it's based on September one salary.
September one.
So we can add the two forty-five back in there, that's.
We would be ahead for the next two years to leave him at two hundred and forty-five days, which is a work ethic.
But, you, when you look at it, I figured it out, you basically, it's hard to work that, so they ended up taking vacation, but you cannot, there's like, two hundred and sixty-five days you can work, and then there's twenty-five holidays. And so you're down to, it's two forty, or something, two thirty-five, I think it is, so two thirty-five, yeah.
So their family.
So, but what this will help us with is when we hire somebody in new. But, we need to also make sure that these people all have job descriptions also, because in the past.
They do. They do.
Okay, but then, um, I do not wanna pay somebody to get their high school principal degree eighty-six thousand, like we've done in the past, like if somebody came along and we were like, oh, yeah, they'll make a good principal, and they've been working on it, we went ahead and paid them the principal's salary. I don't think that's right, we gotta make sure we don't do that.
I think you have to pay for that position, whatever it is, pay.
But not if their, if their job description says you must have a principal certificate, and you don't have it.
Then you can't be hired, is that what you're saying?
No, no, we, we've hired lots of people, we've hired, we, we've paid for several superintendents to get their superintendent license, we've paid for principals to get their license while they were here, we were paying them, and they got it. We don't pay, Jennifer can't say, oh, I'm gonna work on my masters, and we go, okay, we're gonna give you, on our old salary schedule, we're gonna give you what you'd make if you were making a masters. She has to get there, she gets her teacher's salary till then, so that's, we just have to be really.
I don't think that, I don't think that's legal, uh, and I don't know that for a fact, I'd have to double check, but I think once they're, once you hire a person, no matter what their certification is, or what they're, where they are anywhere, uh, once you hire them for that position, you have to pay for that position, not for what they have.
Okay, so then we need to make sure they're qualified for the position then before we hire them.
That's, that's.
We, we'll take a lot of people.
And we don't have a big end of this.
But we have it.
Not long ago. So, this, this was a lot to chew on, and I'll answer any questions, I'm not, I'm not wrapping it up, I don't mean it that way. And I'll, I'll field questions all week long, but during that meantime, whenever I get stuff, you know, you'll either see something very similar to this, or something not similar to this on that, um, next Monday.
Do we need to go over the class assignment?
We're gonna get to that one in just a second. I'm, I'm making sure that this is the index. So, I wanted to, I wanted to step through the processes real quick. So I'm sending this out tonight or tomorrow to PPC, once again, it doesn't have to be voted on by the staff or anything like that, but we're taking input on it, okay? Next week, we'll have an agenda item, basically where it says, you approve whatever the salary schedule looks like for PPC to review, okay? We're adding, we're adding a timeframe layer right now because I took advantage of this workshop. They'll have ten days from that point to talk it over, review it, do all the stuff, you know, get it to the rest of the faculty to look over, get input, and then ten, after that ten-day period, we will come back with, here's our recommended salary schedule. That will happen before May first. Make sense?
Okay, so how.
So we're gonna see each other a lot this month.
Well, at least two more times.
I can't tell the classified.
Well, I'll, I'll rub it against.
Yeah, and I didn't have, I like, we just, the classified, I'll go ahead and start referring to it, I haven't, I haven't got that to anybody else. And there's really, you know, I've outlined what we're, what I'm thinking on that, it's two-step process. This is not a proposal, again, it's just for you to, to look at, to think through, to give feedback on. I haven't given it to CPPC to look at yet, um, but the first step of that process was to, instead, you go ahead, we have people who are at two eighty-five, two forty-five days, we have people who are at one eighty-five days, we have some that are at, um, uh, you know, one seventy-eight. What I, what we tried to do, and it's highlighted in, on the actual spreadsheets, is take two people who were two forty-five to two forty, okay? So that gives them an, and not reduce pay, so we don't change the salary schedule at all, cause they still operate under a salary schedule. Learns Law didn't affect anything that they, that was part of them, as part of the classified salary. But we reduced the number of days, so.
Essentially, they're getting a raise.
They're getting, and it's cents, it's not, it's not dollars right now, like, you look at these, it's fifty cents, basically, so I understand that completely. Uh, but you're right, yeah, so anywhere that you saw, anywhere that's highlighted, that is a change from what was the previous, the previous year's salary schedule. Uh, bus drivers, we.
Uh, bus drivers, we, I took them to one eighty from one seventy-eight, they were technically a student contract days. I took them up to one eighty, they have to have a training in already, uh, that we paid them stipends for. So we just accounted for that and then we, Harry said that he could do things with them on another date at the end of the year, at the beginning of the year. So we can account for those days and, and actually have something for them to do. But, and we didn't adjust the salary schedule, but that adds days to their contract, adds, adds money to what they would earn. When you go to the custodial food service, we reduced anybody that was a two forty-five to two forty. We couldn't, there are certain staff positions that we couldn't do anything to because they were already kind of at the minimum that we could handle. And then the nurses, I, I think they have X amount of days of training, so I didn't get a chance to talk to them about what could be done, if anything, for them. Okay? Um, but we went from two forty-five to one eighty-five, or to two, from two forty-five to two forty and from one eighty-five to one eighty on our custodial maintenance staff. Building secretaries, we did the same. Anywhere that we could, we tried to reduce the number of days, keep the salary the same and then give them that money in return. So building secretary, two oh five to two hundred, Habsken administrator, two forty-five to two forty. You know, and, and all these other lanes, instructional A, two eighty-five to two eighty. That's the concept for that. In the meantime, what we have going on is, you know, legislative hat, legislature has, you know, put out and, uh, I don't know that, I think it's been signed, but I don't even know that for a fact, the foundation funding raise of, you know, I think it went from, well, I don't want to say, cause I don't remember it. It was, I think it was over a hundred and fifty dollars for this next year.
Two oh five.
Two oh five?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's kind of, you know, but they, well, there's other reasons why I say a hundred and fifty dollars, but. Cause you have to take into account the money that they took for the health insurance stuff that we've had to absorb in the school district. But that is increased on the foundation funding and they've even earmarked X amount of dollars to try and go towards, um, classified staff. So what I, what we, what I feel like we need to do, this is the first step that I can propose. Then in the meantime, you know, we can look at, maybe not by May, but, you know, in the summer or in, even into the next school, fifth school year. Okay, now we can take that foundation funding that they allotment and put it towards specific, specific places or across the board or whatever we need to do. That's kind of my philosophy, what I'm thinking through on that. I'm trying to make it to where, but I need to, I need to see, A, how much foundation funding is truly going to be raised? B, where we end up at the end of the year and, and then we can make decisions for, for the classified staff. But this is just putting out what a potential first step would be. And I talked to, I didn't talk to necessarily, you know, a custodial staff member, but I talked to the directors of each of those groups and said, okay, what would that do to you if we reduced their days? Would that be a hardship on you as building principal? Would it be a hardship to lose your secretary for five days? And they also know we could work it out. And honestly, if we had to have them, like if the building secretary was needed and we had to have them for this date and we had to have them for three extra days, we, we'd pay them on their daily rate of pay to bring them in and we just absorb it. So, that's the classifieds.
All the way you're talking about some positions, you've eliminated some positions that's unoccupied right now?
Didn't eliminate them, but we, we adjusted the salary to, because we didn't, we weren't locked into a salary that we had to give them. Is that, is that, that answer?
Well, yeah, kind of. Good enough to, what I wanted to know.
That's all I have.
I have, I have, of course, I have one more question.
Sure.
Um, recently we got signed up for the Title Nine Training Online, which I did, I think Josh did it, you did it, okay. My question is, did we pay for that service?
Yes.
Why would we pay for that service when we have a Title Nine person who in the videos constantly they said, and if you have more questions, talk to your Title Nine person?
Well, we have to have a Title Nine person in district, I mean, that's, I don't know that's necessarily provided by law, but it's good practice.
Oh, definitely.
I think what she's saying is why didn't we just have her bring us all together and present that without paying for a service though?
We could have, but we, that service provides more than just that training. Now, that, it provides a lot of training, but they provide a lot of policy review, a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, just things that even, even that, that, that Tanya would need to be able to do that job of a, of a Title Nine coordinator.
So that's just part of the service that they're already paid for anyway?
Well, and now we, we purchased it this year, I'm not gonna say that it was something that we had all along. But it is something that we, we've invested money into through our, either title funds or categorical funds to help, help facilitate, making sure that we had everybody where they need to be and we have all of our processes in place and everything ready to go.
So who else used it besides the board?
Uh, we sent the same link to all the teachers as well.
Okay.
Or different, excuse me, it accounted for them differently, but it's utilized by them and there's all different other kind of trainings and, um, you know, we have, I have a meeting set up, not this week, but next week, to where they are going to help us go through our policies and make recommendations on how to improve them and do things like that. So it's, it's much of a advisor.
Cause before, watching the video, I just kept saying, now ask your Title Nine person, ask your Title Nine person.
So I, I guess basically all staff is, you've checked the sound off.
Yeah, we, we doubled up on it, so we had training in the very beginning of the year and we.
Right, that was, yeah. So, are we making sure that they, like, everyone watches that?
We, it, it did, it did submit a form, I haven't checked it to see who hasn't or who has, but yes, we can account who has watched it and make sure. Including school board members, yes.
I forgot until.
I did two of them.
That's all we did.
Oh, yeah.
To watch that.
I'm saving it for when I'm like up in hospital, cause I can send around.
And it's good, it goes back through everything.
How many of them did you do?
I thought we were always supposed to, it was.
I don't thought that.
I don't know, there was like five of them on there. Well, it seemed like you were supposed to do this one.
So I didn't do.
Well, there you go.
You're just an overachiever, wouldn't you?
You won't have to do the next one.
Yeah.
Overachiever, whatever. Looks like we all have our names, she's got like eighty-seven.
Okay. Are we good? Anybody else have any questions? Are we ready to go home?
Anybody else?
Home is not.